Good evening and welcome to the Bennington Select Board meeting of November 8th. My name is Jeannie Jenkins. I'm Chair of this board, and I'm going to ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting with Gary.
I'm Gary Corey.
Good evening, I'm Jim Carroll.
Hi, I'm Jean Conner.
Good evening, Sarah Perrin.
Good evening, Bruce Lee Clark.
And Tom sends his regrets. He was going to try and be here today, but he had an appointment out of state, so he was going to try and drive back in time, but I don't want him to be racing. We also have with us tonight Stu Hurd, our Town Manager, Nancy Lively, our wonderful note taker, and Jim Byers, who is recording this for Cat TV. So with that, we're going to begin as we always do. Jim, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. The Pledge of Allegiance is to clarify that the United States of America, a truly republican, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. And now, Jean, would you please read the town's vision statement?
Certainly. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you, Jean.
You're welcome.
All right, so next up is the consent agenda. For the purposes of discussion, could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Jim and Bruce. We have the minutes of October 25th and also the warrants. Does anyone have questions or corrections for Stu or for Nancy? No? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say no. Any abstentions? All right. Thank you very much. Next up, it's our honor to have a proclamation for the Purple Heart Community, and Jim has let me know that it would be his honor to read the proclamation, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. From the Town of Bennington, proclamation, Purple Heart Community, whereas the people of Bennington, Vermont have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all of the citizens of this community who have selflessly served in the armed forces, which has been vital in maintaining the freedom and the way of life enjoyed by all. And whereas, citizens of this community have been killed in action while serving in the armed forces and have been posthumously awarded the Purple Heart for their ultimate sacrifice. And whereas, citizens of this community have been awarded the Purple Heart for being wounded by the enemy while engaged in combat. And whereas, the Purple Heart is the oldest American military decoration. It was created as the badge of military merit, made of purple cloth in the shape of a heart with the word merit sewn upon it. On August 7th, 1782, in Newburgh, New York, it was made by, started by General George Washington, then reestablished as a Purple Heart on February 22nd, 1932, by General Douglas MacArthur. And whereas, the heritage it represents is sacred to all who recognize the sacrifice made to wear the Purple Heart. And whereas, August 7th is nationally recognized as Purple Heart Day. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that we, the Bennington Select Board, hereby recognize August 7th, I'm sorry, of a given year as Purple Heart Day in Bennington, and urge our citizens and organizations to display the American flag, as well as other public expressions of recognition and appreciation of our Purple Heart recipients. We further proclaim Bennington, Vermont, a Purple Heart Community, honoring the service and sacrifice of those from our community who are awarded the Purple Heart while serving in our nation's wars. This is dated at Bennington, Vermont, this 8th day of November, 2021.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So it's our honor, Mary Morrissey, Representative Mary Morrissey, would you please come up?
Good evening. As we start Veterans' Day week, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Town Manager, Stuart Hurd, along with the Bennington Select Board, for working with me and putting this Bennington Town Proclamation together, proclaiming August 7th each year as a day that we will honor our veterans who are Purple Heart Medal recipients. I am also working with the Governor's Office to have the State of Vermont follow in the footsteps of our towns across the state in regards to this proclamation. As a lifetime member and trustee of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Auxiliary and a longtime member of the American Legion Auxiliary, working with VFW Commander Norman LeBlanc, as well as with Rep. Bessie, who is the VFW State Senior Vice Commander, we are so pleased that through this proclamation, we will further honor and acknowledge the selfless service of our servicemen and women, but especially for those who were injured during their time of service for our country. Joining us this evening are veterans representing the Veterans of Foreign Wars and the Auxiliary, American Legion Post 13 and Auxiliary, the Vietnam Veterans Association, and members of the Disabled American Veterans. At this time, I am especially honored to introduce to you four Purple Heart recipients from the Bennington area who are here with their loved ones. As I read your name, please stand and stay standing. Rick Zadel, served and was injured in Vietnam War. Rick was a sergeant in the Army, serving as a paratrooper in the 173rd Airborne Brigade. Joseph Krosick Jr., please stay standing if you can. Joseph Krosick Jr., Colonel retired and former Chair of the Bennington Select Board, served and was injured in Vietnam. Joe also served in other parts of the world during his military career. Gary Martin, served and was injured in Vietnam and was a corporal with the Marines. And Phil Young, served and was injured in Vietnam and was a corporal in the Marine Corps. There are other Purple Heart recipients in our region, but I have to tell you, as much as people may think differently about our veterans, they're extremely humble people that don't always look to ever be recognized for their service. And so we are truly honored that we have the four gentlemen that are here with us today. So at this time, we honor all of our Purple Heart recipients. We look forward to August 7th. That will annually honor these fine men and women across our state. And if you would please stand and join me in honoring these heroes. And everyone may sit if you would like. As November 11th, Veterans' Day approaches us this Thursday, let us all remember our veterans, their families, and our servicemen and women presently serving across the world. Thank you so much. And now Norman would like to...
Good evening. My name is Norman LeBlanc. I'm the commander of the local VFW for about nine years now. Thank you, comrades, Select Board, Stuart, Dan, for having us here tonight. Purple Heart Medal is presented to service members wounded or killed while in action. Serving in the U.S. military, Purple Heart is a solemn description and means a service member has greatly sacrificed themselves or paid an ultimate price in the line of duty. As we learn tonight, the Purple Heart is the oldest military award still presented to American service members. The Purple Heart was one of the first medals ever given to all ranks, so officers and enlisted could get it. One of the first awards in military history to be given, soldiers or non-commissioned officers for their outstanding service. I'm here today to ask for the town's support in making Bennington a Purple Heart Community, the purpose of its designation to honor and remember the military personnel wounded, killed, or hurt in combat or hostile fire. The Purple Heart Community is designated fitting for Bennington because we have a significant military presence in our community, one of which you can see here today. We have an award-winning veterans zone, a VFW post, an American Legion. We have the Combat Veterans. We have the Vietnam Veterans. There's many other organizations that support us. We also have a home to a National Guard unit which is currently deployed overseas. We have accountlets, veterans buried throughout our cemeteries, which we put out flags every year. There's well over 2,000, starting with the American Revolutionary War. This would be a great way to recognize our neighbor's sacrifices and clear strength of the people of Bennington, Vermont. Thank you.
Thank you all. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? So we are signing this proclamation now, and we will make sure that we get a copy. Norm, should we get the copy to you?
No.
We'll get a copy of the proclamation to you, or you'll get the original and we'll get a copy?
Yeah, they'll get the original.
Yeah, you get the original, we'll get, okay. Yeah, so this is something we absolutely want to do, and we look forward to celebrating on the next August 7th as a Purple Heart Community. So thank you very much. Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you all. So next up, we have a COVID update from Dr. Trey Dobson.
Did you want to, oh, we could. Norm?
Oops.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I mean, this copy.
Maybe.
I'll sign it.
This will be our copy of this.
Are we ready to resume?
We're signing all the copies for you.
So, Dr. Dobson, thank you for being here with us tonight to help us understand the changing landscape.
Absolutely. And I'll just give a brief update and then answer any questions to the best of my ability.
Excellent.
So first, I think everyone's aware of the increase in cases we've seen, especially last week, really. That was just a market increase. You know, it actually causes quite a bit of anxiety among everyone, whether you're a healthcare provider or someone in the community, and that's understandable. What's a better indicator is to really watch hospitalizations, which fortunately are not, as of now, rising at that same rate. And the reason is, is because what we're seeing are a lot of positive cases in those who were not eligible to be vaccinated until last Thursday or Friday to begin with. That's the under 12 age group. You know, over 25, maybe even close to 30% of the positive cases are coming out of that age group. And then the rest are coming out of younger folks than used to. And then on the extreme ages, there are positives in elderly patients somewhat near the end of their life with a lot of chronic medical conditions that are testing positive. So I'm given sort of this balanced report of, this is concerning. It's something everyone is watching, and we need to be vigilant about, but it's not as dire as it may seem. And it's not the same as earlier in the pandemic before vaccine, when many of these people would end up in the hospital. So the increases in hospitalization are there. It is a slight increase. Today, for example, if you check this dashboard, there was 55. But I think the last time I was here, there was in the 50s, a couple of weeks ago. So it will likely increase some. We're hoping it doesn't go above 80. That's about the capacity that the systems in the state can deal with. Locally in Bennington, we do get a lot of attention because of increasing cases. Again, I will tell you that there's increasing cases in parts of the state that rotate. It rotates just depending on, it's hard to tell why it rotates. But I think the last I looked, we were fourth, and they were second, then we were fifth, then we were fourth. So our rates are slightly higher because we're next to a border. That's the classic reason in that regard. We also have slightly less vaccinations than other places. Children, so if we move towards children, that is really important group to vaccinate. And let me just explain why, what's happening. What's happening is children are turning positive and spreading it to other children in the play area. They're also spreading it to their parents, and they're spreading it to their older siblings who are not children anymore. They're adolescents or young adults, but are not vaccinated. Now, they can also spread it to vaccinated people. So they're spreading it to vaccinated, vulnerable adults, elderly folks. And that's just the way the pandemic occurs. It's the way that the virus spreads. We have such a high prevalence of vaccinated folks that it's now the younger folks that are getting it. Actually, I'm quite confident. I think you probably saw in the paper, the turnout was strong, stronger than expected, not only locally, but statewide. There's about 45,000 individuals, children, in the 5 to 11 age group. And I couldn't believe this, but nearly 15,000 had signed up by noon on Friday. So that's pretty great, a third right away. And then I believe there's a large percentage of people that are waiting to see what happens, and then they'll follow through in that regard. Then finally, it is really important that we start talking about treatment, because we're actually moving into that phase quickly. So when I say treatment, I'm talking about medications to treat COVID, which actually really haven't been available, or at least wildly available. And right now, if an individual in the community turns positive and is at risk for severe disease, and these are people with underlying illnesses to begin with, then they can receive, if they meet criteria, intravenous monoclonal antibody treatment, which you've read about. It's actually been around for much of the pandemic, but it's gaining in frequency because of the data that's showing it's preventing people from being hospitalized, which is really important. Because if you prevent them from being hospitalized, you prevent them from dying. And that's what we're trying to do. Unfortunately, the media talks about it like it's really easy to do. You just go up to the hospital, and they hook you up to an IV. It's really inexpensive, and it's quick. And that's, none of that's true. It's very expensive to the public and to resources. And it's actually arduous, and the supplies are low. Nonetheless, we've got to maximize it. That's what the state is working on right now. Up at SPMC, we are a center where we treat, but it takes a ton of resources. It's actually not sustainable. We can't survive this pandemic with intravenous treatments in a hospital setting. We have to move to oral treatments soon. And I think we'll be there as early as next month, I believe, that will be FDA authorization, and we'll be able to start that. It's going to be limited by supply. So let's call it early 2022. The idea is that if someone is test positive and is at high risk, again, underlying medical disease, that they could get a prescription, just like they sort of do right now for the flu. In fact, that's a really good analogy to think about it in that way. I personally think some things need to happen, and I'm going to try to work with the state. And even further than that, it needs to be covered in some type of basis, just like lots of things have been covered by cost. We can't afford to do it by out-of-pocket. It would be hundreds of dollars, and people just cannot afford that. And then also, it can't be so arduous where you call your doctor. Call your doctor to get treated. Doctors don't have time to be doing this. They have time to treat people in front of them, and it's not fair to the patients to wait for someone to call them back. We need some type of centralized state location where you can call, if you meet the criteria, the prescription is prescribed, and we can get it to you. I haven't heard that talked about much, and so I'm hoping to start pushing that as an initiative. So that would be early 2022. That combined with vaccine is what we need to keep the pandemic numbers much lower. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. Questions? Yes?
Doctor, thanks for coming. Is it still, those people who are getting COVID, is it still, by and large, largely populated by the unvaccinated?
It is. So in Vermont, our number's a little bit lower, but it's still about a five to one ratio of unvaccinated to vaccinated. If you look at the vaccinated folks that are testing, their symptoms are always, almost always, less, or they're very elderly. Okay, so there's a two thing. Now, everyone's going to say, yeah, but I know someone who is vaccinated, and they got sort of sick. And I say, how sick? Well, they had this missed work, they had a sore throat, and that is terrible. But it's showing that the vaccine's working, because in the past, a lot of those people would have ended up in the hospital. So that's where the treatment and extra vaccine is going to do, because we can't have people stay out of work. That's not good for the economy. But at the same time, it's showing that the vaccine is actually doing what we hoped it would do, and that is keeping people out of the hospital. You know, I can say today that we had around five people in the hospital with COVID-19. It's five more than we need, but it's also not 25. And that's what we saw in January before people could get vaccinated.
Are you seeing breakthrough cases?
About the same rate as we have been. The delta, in other words, the difference between unvaccinated and vaccinated cases is actually increasing, which is a good thing. That's where we hoped it would be. So breakthrough cases, if someone is vaccinated, if someone is unvaccinated, they have five times the chances of getting, testing positive. And that's around the country, and it's kind of held up in Vermont. It's a little bit less in Vermont because we have such a high percentage. When you start talking about hospitalizations, 80% of those in Vermont hospitals that have COVID-19 are unvaccinated, and nearly 100% of the ICU admissions are unvaccinated.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Yes, Jean?
I'm not hearing anything much about new variants. Is that still the case?
It's still the case. When we think of a variant, a lot of times, we think that all variants that come out with viruses are more deadly, or you get more severe illness. But that's actually not true with a lot of viruses. The way a variant of any type of virus starts spreading is just because somehow it has an advantage. And that advantage can actually cause less disease sometimes. And there's a good theory that says that's actually what happens eventually. The virus can spread easier, but doesn't hurt people as much and becomes more ubiquitous. No one knows with this. We don't know. But it is true. Right now, the variants that are being measured have not taken foothold anywhere. So that's good.
And do you have any advice if we should be adjusting our holiday plans?
Yes. So it still remains true that being around vaccinated people is safe. So when we say, can't vaccinated people spread the disease? Absolutely, they can. Vaccinated-to-vaccinated-to-vaccinated spread is incredibly rare, incredibly rare. What happens is, an unvaccinated child or person spreads it to a vaccinated person, and they test positive, and we hear, oh, look, spread occurred. But what you don't hear about, because it doesn't occur, is a lot of vaccinated-to-vaccinated. So if you're in a group with your family and you're all vaccinated, you know, unless someone is really immunocompromised, then it is okay to visit. And in fact, it's good, for all the reasons that we know it's good. But when we start mixing, and even with young children, that starts to be a problem. So unvaccinated young children among a group in Thanksgiving does bring a risk. They do transmit the disease to the parents. And in fact, that's what we're seeing mostly, is transmission occurring in the home from family members.
All right. The last time you were here, you mentioned the goal for the hospital was to get 100% vaccinated by November 1st. How's that looking?
So it looks great. So what I can say is, we're going to be at 100% compliance. In those numbers, we're going to be a small subset of people who have exemptions for medical or religious reasons.
No?
Great.
All right. Thank you so much. This is so helpful.
Take care.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. So next up is public comment. I don't have anyone signed up, but if there is anyone here who would like to speak during public comment, Shannon?
My apologies for not signing up, but we are taking the opportunity. So I'm Shannon Varzadi, the Community Development Director for the Town of Bennington. And tonight, I wanted to introduce Alexina Jones, who's the Director of Advancement at Bennington Museum, and she's the former president of the Bennington Area Arts Council, and also Jennifer Jasper, who's the Executive Director of the Bennington Performing Arts Center. So I had the good fortune of working with both of them over the summer. If you remember, our first concert at the Thompson Family Stage at the Splash Pad at Merchants Park was Soulsteps, a dance troupe of performers from New York City who came up and did the inaugural performance there. And so we did that as a collaborative with the Arts Council, BPAC, and the Vermont Arts Exchange. So they'll give a few updates about that, and then also some of the programs that they have coming up.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alex Jones. Can you all hear me? Great. I'm the Director of Advancement at Bennington Museum and a member of the Bennington Area Arts Council. And tonight, I want to speak about Soulsteps, for those of you who don't know about this fabulous group. They're an African-American step dance company based out of New York City. They're founded and managed by tour de force Maxine Lyle. Soulsteps has toured all over the world, bringing step everywhere from Brooklyn to Kosovo. They've been featured on Good Day New York, CBS2 News, Paris Fashion Week, and the Diesel Jeans viral video, for those of you that watch that sort of thing. They blend hip-hop rhythms, complex bodywork, call and response. Soulsteps was described in the New York Times as giving a performance that is electric and joyous, which certainly was true of their performance here this past June. As Shannon said, this past June, the Arts Council helped to support this magnetic show by Soulsteps on the Merchant Park stage. The show was extremely well-received. And afterwards, we were so pleased to learn that Maxine intended to expand her ties to Bennington, correctly diagnosing this community as needing a little bit more cultural diversity in our diets. To put it in Maxine's words, "We saw a need in the community for work that celebrated Black culture and wanted to do more to support the town's ongoing diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. With racial tension in our country on the rise, and in the wake of unfortunate racial incidents in Bennington, our work is a critical entry point for dialogue and can contribute to Bennington being a more inclusive space for the BIPOC community." When Maxine proposed a wintertime residency in Powell and a reading of their new musical in development and a series of youth step workshops, our area arts organizations jumped at the chance to support this. Bennington Museum, wearing my other hat, is working on our own ways to expand DEI programming, and we were very excited to be able to serve as a fiscal sponsor for Soulsteps. And we've received about $4,000 in grants on behalf of this group this past month, which is but a small amount of money needed to produce a residency, for any of you who are familiar with the workings of the theater world. Soulsteps also has launched a GoFundMe campaign through which they're hoping to raise enough money to pay their artists while they're here immersed in their creative work. And I invite you all to visit the Bennington Area Arts Council Facebook page to find a link to donate to that campaign and to really welcome Soulsteps, not just in word, but also indeed this December. I'm going to have Jennifer Jasper talk a little bit more about what they're going to be doing here, because the Bennington Performing Arts Center is their host organization. But before I leave, I would say, please also visit the Bennington Museum website to see what we have going on coming up. We have some other grants that we have been awarded to work on diversity projects, like a stopping stones project, which is where we do research on the history of slavery in Vermont and in this region. And then... and then install memorials marking the places where slaves and are, you know, in many cases are now current community members, their ancestors were once held. So there's lots of stuff going on, and I invite you to be a part of it. Please. Jennifer?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Jasper, the Executive Director of Bennington Performing Arts Center. And as Alex and Shannon both mentioned, I mean, we had electrifying and really exciting discussions about how to bring diverse artists to Bennington. And we're so thrilled that Maxine found this community so open and so welcoming that she would want to come here and work and develop this important piece of work for them here in our community. And as the talks continued, Bennington Performing Arts Center said, of course, we would love to house the performance of it as a work in progress. And so on December 11th, we are going to have a 7:30 public reading with excerpts from their musical work in progress. They'll also be doing some other of their pieces in that evening. And they will be offering two free workshops on December 12th from 11:00 to 12:00 and 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. at our theater, and those are welcome to all ages. We are so excited to be one of their steps in their new work. The tickets for the fundraiser, this is a fundraising event for them for this reading, but we're keeping the ticket prices low to get a lot of people in to see the work and kind of immerse themselves and also give them feedback because there will be a talk back after the performance, and they want to, as artists always need to know, they need the feedback from the audience to tell them where they are at in their progress. The tickets will be $15 for adults and $10 for students. And we're also going to be having some raffle prizes and other ways to fundraise. Also be passing the hat for people to give and donate to help this troupe develop their work. And it's just part of the work that we really want to keep working on at the Bennington Performing Arts Center, of bringing diverse artists into Bennington as well as highlighting our own. I'll just mention a couple other things going on. On November 14th, the AAUW chapter, the Bennington chapter of the AAUW and BPAC, we will be presenting Bennington and World War II, the women and men who served. This is going to be dramatized excerpts from Toni Morrow's new book, and that's at 2:00 p.m. on November 14th at BPAC, and that is free to the public. We're offering that one free. And we also have the Community Theater's Voices from the Grave that was an onsite performance in collaboration with the Bennington Museum and the Historical Society and other community members, which has been, it's been a great year for collaboration, which kind of says how we've all gotten through the pandemic together. And I really think it shines a light on the future collaboration of we need to come together as a community to continue programming. And this was one of those, and it sold out onsite at the cemetery. So we're bringing it indoors for an encore performance at 2:00 and 7:30 p.m. on November 20th. And you can find out everything that's going on at our location at bpacvt.org. December 4th, we have Jana Lilly's Unsaid Prayers. It's going to be a poetry reading. And December 18th at 1:00 and 4:00 p.m., we have the Jingle Jingle Jubilee. And this is a showcase with our new youth theater program that we're beginning there, and that is $10, and kids under 10 are free. Old Castle Theater and Bennington Community Theater and everything at BPAC has had a really rough time. We were shuttered. But we opened our doors this year, and we'd just like to say thank you to everyone in the community who has come through our doors and kept performing arts alive and well. We do still require masks inside the theater and continue to work towards a safe environment while we work to bring the performing arts more and more to your door. So thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. We've got a lot going on. We're looking forward to it. Yes. Lovely. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? All right. So thank you, and we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the Ninja Trail Grant Application. And I believe that Dan Monks is the person who's going to present this.
I am.
Yeah, it's a little disconcerting when it says reconnect me.
There we go.
Beautiful.
Sorry about that. So thank you very much. Mark Anders was supposed to do this presentation, but at the last minute, he got called to an Arlington Select Board. And so he sends his regrets and a very poor substitute to stand in for him. So why I'm here this evening is to ask for the Select Board's approval of a $200,000 grant application to the VTранs Transportation Alternatives Grant Program, that's a mouthful, for additional funds for the so-called Ninja Path project. And these funds would allow for the completion of Phase One. And I'm going to show you here just a minute what that is, but I'll read it first. Phase One is, it will include a link to Morse Road as well as a bridge across the Furnace Brook and a bridge across another stream behind Hanaford. So let me see if this works. So Ninja Trail is essentially the trail that runs from behind the Walmart, which that portion is complete. It runs along back between the river, Bloomsack River and Morse Road, underneath Route 279, overpass behind Hanaford, through to another section that's completed near the entrance to Bennington College. And then it can continue on through the low-traveled streets of Bennington College into North Bennington. And eventually, we want this to link up to the now under-construction rail trail. So essentially present, give a safe biking, cycling, and pedestrian route all the way from downtown Bennington to North Bennington. So what are we specifically asking for today? So today, we're specifically asking for funds to complete a relatively large bridge across the Furnace Brook near the Bennington Self-Storage off of Morse Road, if you folks are familiar with that. And then there's a much smaller bridge across this drainageway behind the Hanaford. And then the construction of a paved path from Morse Road to the bridge. Now, the purple section is currently a dirt path. It's perfectly serviceable, except for I do have to say the temporary wooden bridge we put in across the Furnace Brook is now not passable. Although we're working on trying to get another temporary bridge in there while we work to get this built. So that in total, we need an extra $200,000 to complete the sections that I've just mentioned. And the second and third sections, the second and third phases would be to complete this portion of the now currently dirt path, pave that, widen it and pave it, and then connect from, pave the section from the Furnace Brook all the way up to the paved section near Bennington College. So that's kind of how we've helped to phase it. Our really, really optimistic, but we hope somewhat realistic goal is to get permits this winter and hope to construct the next construction season, the two bridges and the connection to Morse Road. And the main reason we're focusing on those two portions of the path, those portions of the path first is those are the portions that we don't currently have. We do not have the expertise, at least with regard to the bridges, to construct with our own crews. If we can get these two bridges in, even if we don't get the money, extra money as soon as we'd like, our guys, hopefully time permitting, would be able to pick away at paving the path for us as we go forward because we will have, as part of this first phase, all the permitting. I don't know how clear that was, but we are getting inching closer and closer to making this path a reality. I mean, it already is functional, but it will be extremely, much more accessible and much more enjoyable once we get it paved and we get the large bridges, wide bridges in place. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have about that. But as you know, it's part of our, this is a part of our vision of making Bennington much more bicycle and pedestrian friendly, along with the rail trail, which is under construction. We just finished up the Orchard Village Willowbrook path, and we are working diligently to try to improve, make improvements to Benmont Avenue. Those plans, final plans should be going to the state soon. So we hope to construct a portion of that actually next year as well, subject to availability of our DPW crews. So any questions from you folks or from the audience, I'm happy to answer. But essentially, we're just asking today for approval to apply to the state for an extra $200,000 to complete those portions of the path as quickly as possible.
This is very exciting. We're starting to see green, like real green on here.
Yes.
Yes. It's good. Can you, since Joanne Ehrenhouse left the chamber, I don't know that anyone has talked about, why is it called the Ninja Path?
Excellent question. So, boy, we're talking lots of years ago now. But this has been, this path along the river corridor has been long, I call it a dream for folks. You know, probably starting about 25 years ago was a concept. And as you know, anything in the city of Vermont takes a long time to get up and running and permitted and funded and built. So credit to Joanne Ehrenhouse, and actually Jonah was involved back then too. Do you remember that, Jonah? She said, you know what, why don't we just go out ninja style and create the path? We'll bring our clippers and some hand saws, and obviously we'll get permission from the property owners, but we're going to just go out there and get this path constructed. And she, under her leadership and volunteer support of a bunch of folks, several ninjas, so remain nameless except for Jonah. I just outed him. Sorry, Jonah. But we were able to create the dirt path, and then through, we did some forestry work, and we were able to get some logs from that forestry work on logging of a town property. And we found a contractor who gave us a really good price on building some timber bridges temporarily across the Furnace Brook and behind Hanaford. And those have been, worked great until about two or three months ago. And so we did have this interim dirt path in the purple on the map that was perfectly serviceable for mountain bikes and hikers. You know, obviously, we'd like to make, we do intend to pave it so it'll be more accessible for cyclists who have skinny tires instead of fat tires and for folks who may want to, who would want to travel on a much smoother surface, be it a scooter or a wheelchair or any of those sorts of things. So that's our ultimate goal, and we'd hope to get a long ways towards achieving that this summer, assuming that we get the permitting. We do believe that even without the grant, we can build the main bridge across the Furnace Brook. So, you know, we're going to keep chugging forward even if we're not successful, but we'd love to get both of those bridges done because those are really critical pieces of infrastructure that we don't have the expertise or the equipment to build on our own.
Well, we would love for you to get a $200,000 grant as well. So any other questions? Someone, yep, go ahead.
Dan, is this map on the town website?
I don't believe this map is. We do have some reports and scoping studies that do show similar maps, but I'm happy to pop this one up there.
Yeah, I think it'd be good.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's a good snapshot of where we are right now and what we're trying to accomplish in the next few months. So, yeah, we'll make sure to get that up.
Jean?
Hi, Dan. Thanks for this. Your answers to my questions are in no way going to affect my vote, which will be in the affirmative. But I have, I just have a couple of questions. What's the mileage once it's completely built?
Boy, that's
About?
I'm going to look at the scale, and I'm going to guess that it's about one and a half, two miles.
Okay, cool. I was just curious.
Yep. And that's why Mark Anders should be here because he could rattle that off.
You're doing great.
He would be prepared for that.
You're doing great. Would this be able to be used by people that are skate skiing?
So in the wintertime, it will not be, there is no intention of plowing it. So assuming that the snow cover was significant enough, it would definitely be able to be used for that.
No, what about the training ski?
Oh, the roller.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I thought you were talking about that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
It will be, I mean, obviously, you folks as the elected body can set rules, you know? So there's, you know, do we allow?
Skateboards.
Skateboards. Do we allow roller blades? What about electric bikes that can go faster than X? Those are all great problems to have because it means you have the infrastructure, and you're deciding how you're going to use it. So we're not making any predictions about how that's going to be regulated, but we would love to make sure that as many folks as possible can use it in a safe manner.
Yep. And my only other question is, how high should our hopes be that you're going to get the funding? We are going to get the funding.
I'll say, I'll put it at 50%. I'm going to, so Mark Anders would be here, and he would be much more eloquent than I am. But it is absolutely pathetic, I'll say that, how much, how little money the state of Vermont, in any state for that matter, but the state of Vermont should do better, dedicates to bike-ped infrastructure. It's an absolute pittance compared to all other transportation modes, especially motorized vehicles. So I think the whole state maybe has less than a million dollars to divvy up. We're asking for 20% of that. We're ready to go, though. We have Right-Away certified. We have final plans approved. We're in the permitting phase, so we're hoping that they'll look favorably on that. And often, they'll fund projects that are, you know, as shovel-ready as possible before they'll fund concepts, that sort of thing. So.
Okay.
I'm feeling good. Mark is nearly 100% on his applications. I think he's only missed one in his, I don't know how many years he's been here now, several. So I have high hopes that we'll be successful. We will also check the box that says that we'll accept less if they can't give us full funding, and we'll do as much as we can. The absolute critical piece, we think, is that, the major bridge. The other pieces, you know, we can hopefully fit those in if we get fully funded. And if we don't, as I said, we're going to keep chugging forward. It's not going to stop us.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Sarah.
The deadline for this application is, I may be missing it, and also if this is approved, to submit the application, do you know when you'll hear back? Yes or no?
So I think it's the end of this month that it's due. Another answer that Mark would be have at his fingertips. But yes, I do believe it's the end of this month. And it will be anywhere from 60 days to six months that we'll find out. The state doesn't say when they'll award it. They just say that they will make an announcement when they have made their decision. So we're, you know, we're hoping that we'll know sooner or later. But again, we're going to be moving forward with permitting for the full project regardless of whether we get this funding. So it won't change our timeline for getting our full permitting. So.
Thanks.
Wonderful. So is there no other questions? Does someone want to make a motion for the approval of $200,000 grant?
Oh, Carrie.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve applying for this grant.
Second?
Second. Whatever.
All right. So all those, any other questions? Any other comments? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Please say no. Any abstentions? Excellent.
Thank you very much. And I've mentioned this before, and you guys have asked me to update, but the rail trail project continues on, and they should be working probably through this month. And then they hope to be back March 1st if possible to continue. So we're making progress.
Great. It's great. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. Stuart, I'm thinking maybe you're up next for the for the public hearing on the highway discontinuance. We went on a site visit.
That's correct.
By moonlight.
Yes. Yes, it was, it got dark fast, didn't it? Yes, we did conduct a site visit at both locations. Brookside Drive, which is the entrance to the Brookside Apartments, a Housing Authority project right off of South Street, and the foothills, Town Highway Number 29, which is essentially a driveway that runs essentially a driveway that runs back into a single-family home originally thought to serve a three-lot subdivision, but ultimately, the first buyer bought all three lots and built a house back there. Neither one of these facilities have we maintained over the years. And for various reasons, the state of Vermont has identified them as technically not real town highways. And in order for us to correct the record, I am recommending that we vote to discontinue both Brookside Drive and Town Highway 29. Because they are totally in, within the property boundaries of the property owner, the entire right-of-way will go back to the owner of record. Sometimes when you discontinue a roadway where you have properties adjacent on either side, it goes back 50/50. In this particular case, these will go back directly to the property owners of record.
Great. Any questions before I ask for somebody to make a motion? Someone want to make a motion? Should we discontinue? Yes, go ahead, Bruce.
Sure. I, I move that we discontinue Brookside Drive and Highway 29 as town highways.
Sir.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say no. Any abstentions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great. Okay, downtown funding structure. So, we've had a lot of rich conversation over the last month and lots of ideas and lots of things for us to think about. So, I think what we want to do is put a pause on this so we have time to continue having these conversations and then bring it back once we have a clear idea of, of how we want to proceed to make sure we're not in any way providing a disincentive for individuals to buy property or set up their businesses in the downtown and also that we are continuing to be sensitive to just the overall, you know, taxation of individuals in the town. So, so, if that's okay with everyone, let's just continue having a conversation and bring this back up. It's not time-sensitive, so I think we're, I think we're in fine shape. Okay? Unless I hear any yelling about it, I'm going to move forward. Okay. All right, so, community policing update, which-
Somebody wanted to leave a comment.
Oh, did you?
No. From those community members.
Oh, please.
Hi, Nancy White Bennington. I think this is something that you do need to discuss and you do, do need to vote on. We, we've had the discussions. When the district was created, it was clear. The only people paying in the district are supposed to be the property owners. And to expand that taxation, you need local voter approval. I, I don't know why you want to pause this. I think you need to settle it, vote on it one way or the other, because the charter is very clear. The only way anybody new can be put on the hook to pay for that district is with local voter approval. When the charter was updated and some of you were on the select board, it was discussed at that time, charging everybody a tax, and the, and the committee decided, no. You changed the charter to take the rights away from us to vote and give it to the select board. The state of Vermont threw that change out. I think rather than pausing it, you have to decide what's going to be done, because we know it should be the voters making the decision, not the select board.
Thank you.
Okay.
The, the, it's, it's not warned as a vote tonight, so we're not going to vote tonight. What we're not, we're not saying that we're not going to make a decision on this, we're saying that we're not doing it right now. All right, so, thank you.
You've had two meetings to discuss it, and it looked like you were going to vote. I think to pause it, you're just dragging it on. You have to go by the town charter. It's there to protect everybody so we all know clearly what the rules are and what we're all supposed to be paying for.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, next up, community policing update, which is really pretty quick and a little bit varied. I think we're going to look for a different, maybe a different title for community policing going forward. But the only thing we have on what is strictly community policing in terms of the subcommittee that Bruce Jean and I have been on, is that the public review of procedures is ongoing. You can go to the town website and submit comments. My understanding is that we've had three sets of comments submitted thus far. We have 10 more days. The public comment period goes through 5:00 PM on November 17th. So, please, if you have not taken a look at the procedures, please do so and please comment, you know, if, if you would like. The other thing is, I, I just, I think this whole board wants to thank Jonah Spivak for just the really excellent work he has done in keeping the task force up to date. He has, as soon as he's received materials that the task force has asked for, he has gotten it up on their webpage, which is under Boards and Commissions. And, and he sends out an email to the entire task force each time that happens. So, that is very much appreciated. It's really fabulous work. And then the third thing I wanted to say, Tom isn't able to be here tonight, but Tom and I have been very busy reaching out to a long list of towns, organizations, and individuals who have expressed interest in moving the Declaration of Inclusion into action steps. We are also requesting anyone that would like to talk with us to please email either Tom or me and we will set a time to talk with you. My sense is that it's going to take us a couple more weeks to work through everyone that's on that list at this point. I think we have five meetings scheduled in the next couple of days, so we're, we're moving along as quickly as we can, but the hope is that we'll be able to come back with some recommendations, both in terms of how the town as a body can move toward action steps on inclusion and then how we might want to proceed as a community as well. And all we're looking for are just good entry points there. We're not trying to be inclusive. We're not trying to try and scope this out completely. We're just looking for entry points. So, I think that's, I think that's all we have to report right now on community policing. Okay. So, with that, Stuart, I think you're up for equipment borrowing.
Yes, and this is, this is an annual event. We're a little later in the year than we normally are, but, so, we all, we have bids in on the three pieces of equipment that we'll be including in the borrowing this year. This is a borrowing from the Highway Fund, which is a state program for equipment that, that highway departments need to use. We're looking to borrow $301,953 this year to purchase a Kubuta tractor with boom mower, a Western Star dump truck, and a one-ton pickup truck. All of those pieces of equipment were included in the, in the budgets this year that have been approved by the voters. We have gone to bid. These are the specific pieces of equipment that have won the bids. And so, in order to move forward with borrowing, I looked for the board to make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution, to accept the note, and we will then circulate the note, the resolution, and the tax certificate for your signatures. And then, following that, tomorrow, we'll distribute them to the treasurer and the clerk and ask them to sign where it's appropriate. These are, borrowings actually go through People's Bank, well, it's not People's Bank anymore, but the newly, People's United Bank has now been purchased by another bank, but nonetheless, they are still handling this highway equipment borrowing. So, I have those pages. We just need a motion as I've asked.
I'll make the motion to waive the reading of the resolution, accept the note as presented.
Second?
Thank you. All right. Any discussion before we vote? Nope? All right. Then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say no. Abstentions? All right. Excellent. Thank you. All right, well, Stuart, you were still up. Managers report.
Yes, that's, well, I don't have any action items for you at this time. One important note, especially for the people in the neighborhood of Bowen Road, you're going to start to see some activity at the 259 Bowen Road site, which is the former Jarred Corporation site. The building was leveled some years ago. It was capped all by EPA because it was an abandoned site and no potentially responsible parties could be identified or found. Unfortunately, some of their monitoring has indicated that there are still PCBs within the groundwater. They don't seem to be moving too much beyond the site, but they are there. And so, EPA has reopened the site and they will be drilling some additional monitoring wells and will be keeping us apprised of where they are throughout the next several months. They're looking for this work to take approximately three weeks. And then they'll begin the monitoring to just judge what is happening with the groundwater itself.
Stuart, can I, is there any likelihood that there's anything besides PCBs there?
Pardon me?
Is there a likelihood that there's something besides PCBs there? Are they leaking?
No, no. PCBs were the main contaminant of the site itself. They were used as part of the processes that were used to manufacture what Jarred Corporation was manufacturing, which were circuits, I believe. And so, it's, it really is just PCBs. And, and the beauty of PCBs is they tend to bind into the soil, if there is a beauty to a PCB contaminant. So, they don't move very far, but there has been some issues with the groundwater there. The site is just above the groundwater, given its location adjacent to the Roaring Branch. I should, I note here that, I'm sorry.
Stuart, another question?
I just have a quick question. I'm assuming the answer is no, that there's no issue with the closeness of the baseball fields.
That answer is no.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Perfect.
They have, just historically, EPA has moved in, there were some wells that existed, even though everybody was connected to municipal water. There were wells that existed in, in the past. EPA has closed those all off, sealed them. They've traced whatever movement there has occurred to the swamp area, just the other side of Park Street, and it's been pretty much contained there and has been for quite some time now. So, we're not expecting them to find any hazards here, but I, we're expecting them to understand better what else needs to be done to perhaps remove the PCBs from that portion of the groundwater.
Thank you.
The other thing I was going to note here is that the Franklin Lane upgrade, which we had hoped to be out to bid, I think this fall, has been slowed by the unavailability of contractors in order for us to get real true bid prices. So, we're, we're hoping now to bid this particular project, which is a small section of Franklin Lane from South Street to the rear of the Jay's Hallmark area. It will join in with the newly constructed driveway and sidewalk that you see there from the Putnam Project. It'll be more pedestrian-friendly, a little bit better lit. And so, we're, we're hoping that project moves forward in the spring. As you, as you have noted, now that we have our communications coordinator on board, things are happening very, very quickly and very, very well with our website. And speaking with Jonah, he's indicated that we should perhaps be ready to send out an RFP as early as January of 2022. We have funds available in this fiscal year to upgrade our website, and so, we're hoping that that moves forward in, in that kind of timeframe. And the last piece is that the citizen survey has now closed. We left it open until November 5th. Jonah is in the process, I think, of tallying the results and we'll have a report as soon as that information is available. And that's all I have.
Great. Go ahead.
Jonah, how many people responded? Do you know? Have you had a count yet?
We have around 640 responses currently, but there's actually been a wave this week of surveys that possibly get back to us. There's about 180 that were not completed fully, so that puts us right in between the first survey that we did in 2016 and the second survey in 2018 in terms of responses, and that's why we're standing at this time.
Was there any one location that garnered more responses than others?
I haven't done that a lot of the time lately yet. I was going to wait until there are any more mailed in survey results.
Okay, thank you.
I should have that, as I said, waiting for the end of this week, so earlier next week, I should have those back with me.
So, I have a question about the website. So, we have something like 24,000, 26,000 allocated to website redo. I, so, I'm a little concerned with the timeline. If we don't, if we don't put the RFP out until January, I'm worried that the, that if the website redo, because this is not just a tweaking, this is like adding a new website, yes. If it comes in higher than that, I want to make sure that we have considered that in the budget. Because this is a pretty, I, it's a, you know, it is a major inconvenience and difficulty for residents to find information on our website at this point, so.
It's, it's, it's okay with you, but there will be a preliminary report at your next board meeting in two weeks, which will answer a lot of those questions, so if it's okay with you, just sort of hold on to that thought for another couple of weeks, I think it will be a lot clearer.
Okay, that's great. I just don't want us to move forward with, yeah, with insufficient information. So, that's great. So, we will put, so, website information on the next agenda, yes?
Sure.
Okay, perfect. Excellent. Any other questions before we move on to upcoming agenda? Yeah? Okay. All right, so, in addition to website discussion at the next, at the next meeting, the other thing we wanted to do is start looking at the progress that we have made since the Vermont Council on Rural Development's community visit in 2012. So, one of the things that, in talking with the Vermont Council on Rural Development, so they've done about 25 community visits now in the last 25 years. And they are actually helping us look at how other communities have done sort of a retrospective at a 10-year mark, where you've been, where you're going. But what we know is that we want to start looking at, at the progress that we've made. So, for those who don't remember, in 2012, there were over 200 community members that met over several months, talking about issues that were important to them, looking at where they wanted this community to go and how they wanted that to happen. And the report that was produced is available on our website, so anyone can find it. It is under Government, and then, under the Government tab, and then just scroll down to Documents, and you'll, you'll see it under there. It'll say Community Visit. I wanted to read a few of the, of the Vermont Council on Rural Development's comments that they made on page two and three in that document, because I think it's, it's, it's just very, it's, it's very interesting to, to hear what their takeaways were at the time, and I think it still rings true. So, they began by saying, Bennington has a tremendous leadership team in place, from town government to the Chamber of Commerce, the Better Bennington Corporation, schools and colleges, the hospital, service agencies, associations, and businesses. The town's capacity for leadership is tremendous. They went on to say, we hope that there were points in the visioning process when Bennington participants looked around the table and saw the terrific capacity to get things done that we, as a visiting team, observed. There were two issues that were recurrent in all the Bennington conversations that the- deserve mention. First, the concern for youth. Everywhere we went and in every conversation, people shared how much they cared about the young people in the town. Young people, on the other hand, complained that there wasn't enough to do, and both adults and students felt that many young people were not engaged. Bennington is not alone in this challenge, but clearly this came through as a loud call for action. Young people need to be challenged and their leadership encouraged. They need to be actively invited into the work of the community and expected to help advance key initiatives." The second point that was recurrent was that many participants said, quote, "People from outside Bennington think much better of the town than we who live here," end quote. Bennington certainly has its share of challenges, and any thinking person has a measure of realistic pessimism. But to the visiting team, the impression was one of great capacity to get things done if people acted together. The ideas on the table during the process and the priorities established are starting points for action. Bennington has the capacity, the people, the land, and location to think big and challenge itself as it did in this process." Then they continued on to say, "Bennington is a town lined up to succeed, and the key ingredients of success are commitment, faith, and step-by-step collective action. The VCRD commend all those who participated in the community visit process. Have faith in one another, and you can achieve great things." So that was their sense of who we were 10 years ago, which I think is pretty nice. So our whole, our plan right now, so Jean and I have talked about this, and we've talked a bit with Stu and Dan about it as well, is over the next two meetings, to look at the, at the four areas that, that the community, that came out of those community visits. So what we'd like to do is on November 22nd, take up two of those areas, and those are, one area is developing a Bennington vision statement, advancing community connections, and a positive town image. So that's one bucket. The second area of focus was making downtown Bennington a destination and building a new Bennington Town Green. So we'd like to address those two at the next meeting, and then at the December 13th meeting, take up the other two topics, which are advancing a Bennington Community Center and improving recreation, and collaborating to address poverty and building a poverty working group. Okay? So that, that's our hope. That feels like we'll need some staff, we'll need staff help to do that, but it feels like this is a great time to, to start doing that. So those are the two items I know that are on the agenda. Is there anything else that, that we, that anyone knows about that we need to have on the agenda? We always have surprises, but, but that would do it. Anything else? No? Okay. All right. So then, last thing is matters arising. Anything other business? Gary, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yeah, I would just like to say that Vermont Business Magazine announced the winners of its Rising Star Recognition Award just recently, and that list is comprised of 40 winners under the age of 40. And these award recipients were selected by a panel of judges for their commitment to business growth, professional excellence, excellence, and involvement in their communities. And from our town, Beth Wallace of UCS and Michaela Lewis of the Chamber of Commerce were recognized. And I just think that's a wonderful thing for our town, have those, those young ladies, young women.
Yeah. It's outstanding. Thank you for saying that. Great. Jim, anything? Okay. What about Eugene?
I just wanted to mention and congratulate all those that were involved in the completion of the path from Orchard Village to Willowbrook. The ribbon cutting was last week, I believe, a beautiful day, and there were members of Shire's Housing there, the architects, Jeff Goldstone, members of the town. Mark Anders was there, a lot of us were there, and the principal at Molly Stark, and even some of the kids. It is, the path is absolutely beautiful. It's safe, and it allows a safe way for kids and, and anyone, adults included, to get from Orchard Village, you know, over to Willowbrook, and then on to, what's that road?
Orchard Road and Molly Stark School.
Orchard Road and Molly Stark School, yeah. There, there was no way for them to get to school safely if they happened to miss the bus. But now they can get to school safely, which is, the hope is it will increase the attendance rate. So it's, it was, it was a great, a great thing. We waited 10 years, was it? 10?
About 10 years, yeah.
10 years. So congratulations to all who made that happen.
Who amongst us has ever missed the bus, though? Really? I have another, I have one announcement. Um, Spirit of Sharing is happening again this year. It's a program that matches volunteers with individuals, families that are looking for presents or in need of presents this year. It's put on by the Agency of Human Services, partnered with Rotary Club. Last year, they served 473 local children, and they're looking for partnering with volunteers. So they visit the Bennington County Spirit of Sharing if you're in need or desiring presence this year, or if you want to volunteer. That's a Facebook page, and also they have a link if, if you're desiring the link as well. I would try to read that, but sorry, I, maybe, sorry, so if you could just find somebody that is on Facebook and get, get to contact, get to know, you can, you can send this via email, gettoknowrotary@gmail.com. Sorry, I'm struggling a little bit with my voice. So gettoknowrotary@gmail.com. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anything, Bruce?
No.
No? Okay. Well, then, I think we have no more business. Uh, do I, I would entertain a motion?
Some move. If you move, we adjourn.
To adjourn, yeah. Second? All right. Anyone? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all.